If we had kept them though they wasn't scanned. Yeah, and they did look better. But the others have all those electric wires from the area. Yeah, it's had some, especially the electric wires from the two thirty.
The thickness where the wires sit, I think, yeah. I gave my copy though. Cause you see the, you see the uprights and the wires.
Here we go. The September third meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Open podium is an opportunity for our residents to address the council on issues related to city government prior to the start of each council meeting. Those meetings are generally held the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the issue you would wish to discuss. This portion of the meeting is not televised or recorded, and if we have no scheduled speakers, then we open it up for unscheduled speakers. But scheduling is the best way to do it, as there's no guarantee otherwise that you will be able to have open podium time. If you have any questions, please contact, again, the city manager's office. The first item on the agenda is HRA meeting. I'd like to call that meeting to order. Is there a roll call? Do you want to do roll call?
Councilmember Aho.
Aye, here.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Chair Tara Lukens.
Ah, here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on June 4th?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. The item of business is to adopt a resolution to approve the proposed 2014 HRA property tax levy at $200,000 and accept the proposed 2014 HRA budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This meeting, the first meeting in September, is the meeting where we typically need to approve our preliminary budget and levy for both the city and the HRA. This action is for the HRA. We'll talk about the city budget a little bit later. Stage statute creates the ceiling for how much a city can levy for their HRA, and we're proposing a $200,000 levy, and I think I was asked this last year and again earlier today, how that levy compares to previous years, and this levy, I believe, is the same one that we've adopted for at least ten or twelve years or so. And it does fund projects that are for redevelopment and planning for housing assistance programs, and the tip, the limit for the city is 1.6 million. But again, as you'll see with the regular budget, we preliminarily set the levy now. It could be changed only downward by the end of the year, but this levy is one that we've had in place for many, many years, funding many important housing and redevelopment activities, so we're proposing to do that again this year.
Any questions of Mr. Getchell?
I would move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2014 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2014 budget of $200,000.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll start the city council meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move to approve. Second.
Anything to add or delete? All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop held Tuesday, August 20th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes held for the city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. First and only public hearing tonight is Hennepin County, plat number two. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a plat on 1.99 acres for one lot and one outlot at 16011 and 16041 Pioneer Trail. Official notice of the public hearing was in the August 22nd Eden Prairie News and sent to forty-five property owners. You may recall that Hennepin County first acquired these parcels for right-of-way on County Road Pioneer Trail project, and they now wish to plat the property into one single lot and outlot. The outlot would be retained by the county for right-of-way, and the remaining other lot would be sold for future development. The plan commission voted six-zero to recommend approval of this at their August 12th meeting. A copy of the plat is in your packet as well, and I believe the project proponent is here to answer any questions that you may have or provide further detail on this single lot and outlot.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 1.99 acres into one lot and an outlot.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye.
Reports of city manager, resolution on the property tax levy. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Following our discussion downstairs earlier and also in the workshops this summer, this is the time of the year where we need to set a preliminary budget and tax levy for 2014. At between now and the end of the year, we could lower both the budget and levy, but we cannot raise it, so we're basically setting our ceiling. And as you know, we still spend quite a bit of time in the fall and into the winter discussing our budget, and in Eden Prairie, we actually prepare a two-year budget, and each year the city has to set a different, each year must set a levy and a budget, even though we do our planning two years in advance. In the case of the proposal before you tonight for the city property tax levy and then approving the HRA levy, we have a proposal for a 1.8% total increase in the tax levy, and we're looking at a total proposed city budget of a 2.9% increase. You may recall that some of those numbers, especially the number related to the budget, has been reduced throughout the summer, and some of the highlights in the budget include some investment in some of our public safety programs, such as a potential point-of-sale program. We have items that we have to put in the budget related to our community center where they're, along with this point-of-sale program, it's a revenue-neutral program, but you still need to put in both revenues and expenditures to cover any new program or increase. One of the other discussions that we've had recently too is how our tax levy is impacted by some other programs, and we were looking at like our fiscal disparities program, for instance, which is a tax-based sharing program for commercial properties throughout the metro. It looks like from some numbers that we received this week that we are, again, near the top, or at least increasing our, our contribution into that program. That's, that's good news for Eden Prairie in that we're seeing quite a bit of commercial development. When you have a program like this, it requires us to have to pay a little bit more of our burden. So even though we received some really positive news with insurance and other pieces of our budget, we were able to lower our budget, but we're still looking at a tax levy of 1.8%. And you'll see in the packet sheet as well, that of the cities that we've gotten information from, we are one of the few, one of the few cities that is looking at a levy of less than 2%, so it does compare very favorably across the region. And additionally, the numbers that we have now show that the median-valued home will pay less in taxes once again next year than they're currently paying this year. And for the first time, we saw slight increase in the value of the single-family residential median home. So that idea that the values stabilize or go up and taxes are stabler go down is a position that we really were happy to be in and we want to be in. So we're seeing those trends, that increase in the single-family home value is actually from 2013 value paid 2014, so we hope to see even more positive news on our tax base moving forward, and think at least at this stage in the process that this is a very responsible budget that continues to offer all the programs and services at a high level and adds even a few more at a very reasonable cost. So again, the action tonight is setting that preliminary levy and budget. You could change that between now and the end of the year, but we have to take this action by September 15th of this year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, just a comment. I'd like to thank the staff for working so hard to keep this at inflation rate, and especially with some of the possible healthcare stuff going down. I, I realize that you can't do much about the fiscal disparities limit, but keeping this within the rate of inflation is important, and we've done a lot to keep it that way and keep our services high, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2014 property tax levy to be $33,020,011 and sets December 3rd, 2013, as the meeting which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2014 budget of $43,497,285, and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Report of the Park and Rec Director, Mr. Luthammer.
Your Honor, councilmembers.
That was a trick.
Were you hiding behind?
Got over here pretty quickly.
We're still awake.
Councilmember Case had asked that I take a look at our park boundary inspection and program and come back with a recommendation of what should we do going forward, or if we should stay the course. And I'm gonna give you my recommendation right out of the chute, and then I'll explain why, as I go through some of the slides that show pictorially what we try to do and why we do it the way that we do. I did have a chance to talk with our, our staff that works with it on almost a daily basis this time of year. It's a busy time for us to be able to get out there, to find the property lines, to be able to put the stakes in place, and to work with people who may not be in compliance. And as we talked through it and talked about some of the ideas of, could you give some people a few feet and some people a few more feet, but make some people keep just the same amount of feet that they have, and tried to talk about, you know, a lot of those what-if scenarios, we kept coming back to, really, the only thing that stays consistent for us is the property line. And as I went back and looked at the minutes back in 2005, when this first really came before the council in a program in earnest, there's a pretty good quote from Mr. Lambert at the time, talking about the, the need for the resolve for the council to, to stay with and, and not to give in to any special request because of the, the position that that would put staff in and being too arbitrary, and, and potentially both staff and council in playing some type of a favorite, if, if it was okay for one and not for another. And there's always the cases, as you'll see, that sometimes beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and what some people think is, is a, a good thing to do, others would say, I don't think they should be able to do that. So with that said, let me just walk you through just a little bit of history, because if it is a direction we're gonna continue to go forward, I want you to have some information if you do get questions from residents. But back in, prior to 2005, there really wasn't an active boundary inspection. It really came to be based on a complaint basis. So a neighbor would call and complain about another neighbor, we would go out and try to resolve that on an individual basis. So what happened in 2005, and you know, some of you that were on the council may remember this, because there was quite a bit of debate over multiple meetings, but I show you this, kind of this horse-shaped, horseshoe-shaped neighborhood, for the reason that this was the, the neighborhood where one of the neighbors said, "My neighbor is building a deck and doing some things on the city property that I don't think is right." So our staff went out to inspect it, only to find that the neighbor that called to complain about the neighbor was also encroaching on city property, only to find out that 70% of these homes along this area were also encroaching on city property. So 2005, that all comes back before the council and gives an example of what was happening out there where we interface boundaries. And I really think that's what gave the council the, the idea and the resolve to move forward with this, because I can tell you from a staff perspective, there is pain involved with this, and maybe that's just my job as a park and recreation director, where there's usually a lot of pats on the back and, and good things to do, and I'm, I'm not used to maybe what my, you know, fellow police chief might go through in doing some enforcement, but in the enforcement business, it's not always about making friends. And so you may hear about this, I think, as I know, in the last seven years, you hear about a couple cases a year that come to you in some way that say, people are saying this isn't fair. We work with over 200 inspections a year and make it understandable and make it work for the people that are out there, and the majority of them comply, and we help them understand why they should comply. So just to kind of take you back in, in your mind of what this used to look like, we now have compliance, we've now been able to go into this neighborhood and many, many others and be able to mark it with the posts so that it's clearly visible, because we hear from a lot of people that we come into contact with is, "When I bought the house, they told me all of that was mine. My realtor said it goes way back to where the current swing set is. I didn't know it was on there." So having these boundary markers in place really provides a good benchmark for people that may move in and may not do the lot survey, and may trust what somebody that really doesn't know for sure what they're talking about says in kind of a sales situation. So keeping moving along, 2005, the council approves dollars to hire boundary inspectors. We usually have one or two on per year. We kind of mix and match them with some of our forestry technicians, depending on where the workload is at that time of the summer. 2006, 2,100 letters go out to residents, letting them know about this program and that at some point in the future, it's coming their way. We have those boundary inspectors. We have one that's on, been on all summer, and has done a nice job getting out and, and making sure that people understand where their, their property lines are. We've been able to get 29 of our 43 park areas inspected. There are some that don't need inspecting, because we're our own neighbor, when you think about like Riley, we don't have any interfaces with neighbors at a park like that, so we won't even be out there inspecting. What we were finding and have found that of those 2,100 that we go to, or the 1,500 that we've been to, about 30% are infringing in some way, shape, or form, and I'll show you that in just a little bit. Again, there has only been a couple of those over time in the last five to seven years that you've heard directly about as council members, or there's only been a couple of them where we've had to take all the way to the point where a judge tells the person, "You have to do this. You have to take your hot tub out of the ground. You have to take your junk cars off of the park property. I insist that you do that." They did not feel that they needed to comply with our letter or a visit from our police officers, and they wanted to take it all the way to the judge. And so there's been one or two of those situations where people will continue to try to advocate for what they think are, are their best interests. In 2013 so far, we've got 220 interfaces that have been inspected, and that's about right on our pace. We're doing a couple hundred a year, depending on which ones they are. We started with the heavy workload up in some of the more natural areas, harder to get to, harder to find the pins, sometimes the pins are not there. What we've been able to do in the last couple years through, with technology, we GPS all of those pin locations now, once they're found. So if somebody regrades it and knocks them out of the ground, we know exactly where they are, so going forward, our job of doing a reinspection will actually be faster. And I will tell you that we'll advocate in a couple years of reinspecting because of these 30% that don't comply. Once we get them to comply, we tend to find that some of them believe that once we've gone away, that we're not coming back. We haven't been that aggressive about coming back, but sometimes our, our inspector's in the area and it clicks in their mind that the boat's back where it shouldn't be, or they remove the swing set, or they recut some more vegetation. And so there are people that don't believe that we're serious and they continue to, you know, reoffend. This is just a map showing graphically, the green areas have been fully inspected once. The red areas, they're partial, so we haven't completed all of them. Most of them are engaged in some way, shape, or form, it's just waiting for some surveys from a survey crew to get the right lot, so gives you an idea. We started mainly up in that northwest corner of the city where there are a lot of the conservation easements. Some of the parks where it's mowed to mow, a neighborhood, traditional neighborhood park, we don't see as many high percentage of offenses there, but in some of the natural areas, it's amazing what people have done, and I'll, I'll show you some of that. And it's unfortunate what people have done, because it's gonna take a lot of years to restore that and let it, let it come back to being natural. I know you've seen these, we've, we've had parts of this presentation over the past couple years. This is something that we shared about six months ago with the Parks Commission as well, gave them an update, kind of year-to-date for 2013, shared some of the photos. Generally, what you're gonna see in these photos is one side of the tape measure shows where it's city property, the other side shows where it's the residential property, and some of the examples of either how far they're mowing in, some of it is dumping, some of it is clearing of trees that were there, and now it's become natural lawn. You see pictures of gardens, you see fireplaces, fire rings, more gardens, another case of the swing sets, fence that is well onto property, kind of a unique area down in the bottom right with some sheds and chairs and boats, and, and all of these people also have, most of them have neighbors on each, each side of them that are also seeing this and, and looking at this. And we explain sometimes to people, imagine if you went out of town and you came back into town, and your neighbor had now fenced off part of your yard as theirs and had a fire pit on it and was using it. You know, people think that public property is everybody's property, and so why can't I, we weren't using it anyway, is what we hear a lot. It was just allowed to be weeds and grass and trees. So we try to educate people on why it's important that we protect that property and why, you know, they might as somebody who, if they had their property encroached on, would immediately take exception of that. Why wouldn't they see it in the other direction? Couple more ideas, and you know, when you think about what we've asked people to do, all of these slides that I've showed you now, people have had to take everything off of there. In some cases, they've had, then gone and rebuilt it again on their own property, and when you think of some of the expenses, and I remember hearing one of the scenarios in 2006, there was a large boulder retaining wall. Sometimes we've had people that have probably incurred $30,000 to $40,000 worth of cost in order to remove some of these items and then probably recreate them again. Some cases, it's just stop mowing, but we've consistently applied that, and so one of our reasons for the recommendation and the logic we use is, almost 70% of the places we've inspected, there's about that 30% to go, and we've been consistent with that first 70%. And so how would we tell somebody now, "It would be okay for you to leave that large structure on city property," but the person that we made remove the pergola and the really nice, and you know, I think we'd all agree that the pictures on the right side are really nice. Maybe the pictures on the left aren't as good, and so should we make that distinction and say, "Well, if we don't like the way it looks, get it off. If it looks really nice, feel free to leave it on?" That's where we continue to come back is, the property line is a property line, and have at it on your own property, but the public property should be maintained in a way that it was intended to, a lot of times in a natural state. Another couple pictures, these are all of the things that we found. I'm sure more things will get added to the list as we continue to go. Kind of, who would have thought that we would come across an in-ground hot tub about 30 feet back in, what would be considered back in the woods on city property? Kind of a neat deal if you can do it, and if it was on your property, but it wasn't their property. The one I want to kind of close with is one that's been in front of you very recently. Again, just to tell you why we think it's important. This is Reader Ridge that you recently approved, and there's quite a few homes that back up to these hillsides and natural areas, and also the conservation easements. We wanted as a city, you as a council, wanted to have those protected, whether they were steep slopes for erosion, just to have, remain that natural area. What history would tell us, if we didn't put the markers in, what history would tell us is probably 50% of these homes, in a couple years from now, you could go in their backyards and some of them would have cut trees. We've had an instance where a gentleman cut more than 30 large trees overlooking a slope. That would, could and probably would happen there. Again, that 30% of the people that don't know about it, don't understand, and don't have posts in their backyard, have elected to do something. Maybe on that steep slope, they could put some steps down and terrace it and have a really nice fire ring. So we really believe that this is a case where you as a council, and past councils that have adopted plats just like this, really meant to have this maintained, have it protected, and have it done in a way that meets the original intent, and in most cases, it's for preservation purposes. And so we would suggest that we would enforce this, just like we did in the first plat that I showed you that was in 2005, and we would suggest that these lines were drawn for a reason, and they should be maintained. And the people that are about to buy these lots, they should go in and understand where their lot line is, and if they don't, they should check into it. And anybody that would like to consult with us, they can do that. We can help them to the best that we can. With today's technology, with Google Earth and things like that, you can get probably close enough to tell yourself, "I really need to check," or "This is well within my property." And so we would encourage people to, if they have that question, come and see us. Maybe they don't have to go all the way to a registered land survey and pay those types of costs in order to be able to do something that we could say is, is definitely within their property. So our, our intent on this one, as we go forward, would be to get the stakes in as soon as possible, so people understand where they are, and to periodically check this just like we would with any other property interface, and if people are trespassing, we would notify them that they needed to stop doing that, and in some cases, restore the area, some cases, just stop mowing. So with that, stand for any questions or comments or suggestions that you might have.
I have a question, Mr. Luthammer. With some of these structures that encroach into park property, how does that happen? Because some of them require a permit, like putting in a pool, I would assume requires a permit in order to get somebody in to do it.
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a common defense of the second homeowner, that when we find something that maybe should have had a permit, then usually they're telling us, "It's, it's our fault," because if we would have made them get a permit, we would have been able to tell them, "You can't do that." But in a lot of these cases, these might be backyard builders, it might be a pool company that, you know, that, that people aren't necessarily always pulling permits, and when it's happening in the backyard, it's not something easy for us to stumble across. And that's where, in most cases, other than our active inspection, where we go property line to property line, that's where, you know, we'll hear from a neighbor that says, you know, "My neighbor just cleared three big trees, and I don't think it's right," and they may have done it so that they could put their gazebo in or make their fire ring. But yeah, there are a lot of cases out there that they probably, if they would have followed the proper procedures and would have asked, we would have probably told them, "You can do it, but just not 20 feet back. You'd need to stay on your own property."
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, we had someone come in for open podium last council meeting about outlot, keeping noxious weeds off of them and things, and one thing that I've heard over and over again for the last three or four years is people saying, "Well, if the city would just maintain it, I wouldn't be tempted to." And they still, still shouldn't, but there is a level that we do need to keep the noxious weeds out of the lots, or if there's a large tree that falls within sight of someone's backyard, they do have the reason to expect us to get rid of that, and I know that doesn't always happen. And sometimes it's... And sometimes it's, but, but if it's impinging on their property, things that they might take another neighbor to the city for, to clean up, say, we need to find a way to do that. I almost, I had talked to the city manager about possibly looking for a program of outlot volunteers that are trained and assigned to do hand weeding or such. I think we do need to do a little more in the areas where, especially with the outlots that aren't even park pieces, per se, that we do need to find some way to keep up these so that the neighborhood still looks good and that we are being a good neighbor to them, preferably without having to spend much in the way of city dollars. So I hope we're looking at some kind of a volunteer program with some training and, you know, so we know who is assigned to where, to try to do something about those. And also, you know, to continue being a good neighbor with our property when trees do go down. You know, if they're way in the middle of the woods, it's one thing, if it's 10 feet from your property line, it's another thing. And that's when they, I think a lot of us get calls from people saying, "Why isn't the city doing something? If they don't want me to do it, why aren't you?"
Yeah, councilmember Nelson, a couple responses. We are looking at, I believe it's either four or five areas or outlots where we were actively mowing, where we're going to look at converting that over to native grasses. And so that will be an enhancement, other than sort of just letting it go wild or letting it go natural again, will actually help it get naturally in a, in a really good way. That isn't something that, short of endless funds, that's not something that we can do on an annual basis or do to all of the outlots. In a lot of cases, the best response for making those outlots a little bit better is to do more of a spray treatment and to kill some of those weeds. And so that really requires a lot of our, you know, trained and certified staff. And generally, if we are aware of it, we're trying to do something. In the case of the gentleman that was here, we were about a day behind responding to that prior to him coming, but we were able to turn that around. And some of it can be weather-related for us on when we can get out there and do that. We don't have as active of a spraying program or a weed-treating program as we, as we could. But again, that goes back to dollars for both chemicals and people power to be able to do that. So a lot of the areas are in a natural state. In general, people will label them as noxious weeds, but they're not. They're just not good native wildflower-looking areas. But we have been trying, you know, there's some of the hillsides along Valley View that we were getting a lot of the thistle that we have been spraying over a couple of years. But all of this stuff takes time, whether it's hand-pulling or spray-treating, it isn't one treatment and done or one year and done. It's a, it's an ongoing basis. So, you know, our selection is, first, we put as much of our effort as we need to and as much of our dollars as we need to into the prairies that have been planted and established. Some of the hillsides down along, as you go towards Lion's Tap, we'll do the things like burn, like revegetate overseed. But we've been able to get some of our efforts into those areas that have just been left to go sort of wild, because a lot of things do enter into there that, you know, if they were in our own mowed grass lawns, we wouldn't like that and we would certainly quickly treat for that. But it's a, it's a large process to be doing it, and I can tell you, we're biting it off piece by piece, but it, it will take time. We will probably into eternity find these weeds and need to be able to continue a treatment program. It'll be, it'll be ongoing. In terms of getting more people involved, we'd love to do that, we do do that. We have quite a few events, some that we organize, some that are through Master Gardeners, Friends of Birch Island Woods, that we help support. I think we can get more of a marketing and promotion effort together for some of those and try to engage more people in those. Sometimes you'll eat, we'll see 30 to 40 people at a time, but I think we could always use more and be able to cover more areas if we can get more people that are interested and wanting to be active doing that.
Councilmember Case?
As one of the council members, I think there were two or three of us actually, that were concerned enough to bring this to the council level, I just wanted to say that I do, I do think the issues that councilmember Nelson brings up are, are significant and relevant. I, I think they're peripheral to the core issue of, are we on track protecting our borders? And I would say, for all the reasons that we began this back in 2005, it makes perfect sense to continue, because it's been successful. And I, I think we are, I mean, I think, I really believe we are making progress and it would be a mistake to turn back now. So I appreciate the time and energy you put into the report. And it is nice, I think, now and then just to revisit and say, "This is the path that we want to be on and it's all the reasons why we're here." In fact, it's important to be able to tell people who raised their concerns today that, just to remind ourselves, "Why did we go down this road in the first place?" This was good, thank you.
Yeah, it was good. It's, you know, it's really been 2005 since we really dug into this and, and talked about issues again. And I'm real comfortable with continuing with the direction that we're going. I think we would really open a can of worms if we got into that whole aesthetics issue that, that you had talked about. And the thing that, one of the things that I really like about this program, aside from the fact that it protects park space for all of us who own it jointly, is that it doesn't end up pitting neighbor against neighbor. I think there's got to be a huge reluctance on the part of some neighbors who have to look at some unsightly encroachment, or even a nice encroachment, but they're following the rules and somebody else isn't. It's hard to turn your neighbor in and wonder whether they think you're the one who told the city on them. So I think this kind of, having this inspection program takes that element out of it, and I'm really in favor of this.
Me, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lotthammer.
Welcome.
Any other business for the council? If not, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, no.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Being adjourned.
Thank you for being here. I was prepared to talk all day long about reasons, but I just can't solve them here. We were ready, I was very great.